And checking them out like you do in, you know, grocery store.
Yeah.
Checking them in and out that way.
That'd be easier and more productive too.
With our inner library loans.
Yeah.
It also helps us attract more people to the library.
Yes, other libraries can see how many copies of what they have.
Come on in, girls.
And if they need to borrow.
Oh, I read anything. I love books.
I know, um, I think the last time.
Come on in, girls.
I think the last time I went to the library, I had ordered a series of books from Amazon and they actually sent me two copies. So I donated the additional copies to you guys. But the last time I've actually been to the library was back when Sharon was librarian, so.
Yeah, well, and see, that's one of the things that we have.
Get your chairs, girls.
Right there.
But that's one of the things that we have is that we need the support of the people when the library's open. We need people in there. That ups our census numbers, which ups the amount of funding that we can get. So if we don't have people in the library that's taking funding.
See, I know you're gonna talk up at the library, but can you bring that out when he's recording? Because we need, I didn't know that. No, no, I wasn't aware of that.
It's important for the community members to come into the library because those numbers are part of what determines some of our funding.
Yeah, see, I didn't know that until you just said it.
Hold on, mother. You said you guys have audiobooks, right?
We have access to those. We have some here and then we can get some more.
I mean, I work a lot, like I mow and stuff and I have a pair of earbuds and it'd be nice, you know, I just listen to music, but it'd be nice to, you know, listen to a book or something or if I'm working, you know. I mean, that's a great feature and I mean.
It really is a good idea too because it teaches mentally.
I don't know, I get a book and I pause.
The library also has a couple of computers up here for public use.
Well, I'm not a computer tech, so.
He's actually worked on the computers before.
We have Wi-Fi up here. We have the ability to run copies for a small fee. So there's lots of services that the library has.
Well, I mean, that's great.
But we're going to have to get somebody.
Madam Jim and I will start the meeting.
Okay. Call to order the special meeting of the Turon Community Library on seven eighteen twenty twenty-three to order at seven oh five. Roll call. Heather Frank, Rhonda Brown, Jan Joyce, Mary Beth Reynolds. Um, before we get going, um, anything need to be added to the agenda?
We need to add public comments in before anything else to give them a chance to address their concerns, I think.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah. Do you have any votes?
I don't know which is.
We need to add public comments in before the any voting goes on so that the people that are here have a chance to express their concerns and have them addressed. Okay, so do we have anyone objecting?
Objecting? I would make a motion that we approve the agenda with the added line. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, public comments just now.
Oh, what are the responsibilities of the library other than to monitor the children, make sure that they're doing appropriate stuff and not illegal stuff? The kids, come on, we know. Girls, Richter.
Okay. There are multiple things that a library does, is provide information, knowledge, reading materials, a place to come and get on the computer, um, check out books, get books in, order books if needed. Um, just be a central hub of knowledge and information to a community.
A safe zone for the kids.
Not just kids.
Yeah, adults.
Everybody.
And then the library also has a mission responsibility, like many children's programming books, book clubs, applying for grant funding, um, keeping the census up to date and accurate. There's lots of different things the library does. It's not just checking out and checking in books.
Does she have to clean or?
Yes.
The library.
The library, okay.
Back getting dust and putting stuff away.
So she stays pretty busy?
Yes.
Very busy.
Okay.
Anyone else have a public comment?
Anyone have questions?
Um.
Your name?
James Noel.
K N O L L.
I'm just curious. I mean, I understand there was some conflict between the secretary and I'm not trying to, but, um, have you guys thought about, cause I mean, what I've seen of the librarian that resigned, she's been doing a dang good job. Have you guys thought about trying to get her back?
She did do a very good job.
She did do a job. It was not, it was her choice to leave?
Well, I know. I've kind of talked to her a little bit, um, not very much, but she said she resigned out of anger. I mean.
No, her anger.
I mean.
It was my anger.
I understand that we're not the best.
Many of these stupid things were more angry or.
Yeah, and you know, something of all of the librarians that I've had here at Turon that I've experienced, I've heard the best.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm sorry to state this. I know this prejudice because some of the other librarians were good friends of mine.
The truth, the truth.
What she does for the library and she's very good at what she does. And I get killed anymore. I heard she quit. It just, I know, I'd agree with you also, a lot of the like.
I mean, have you guys thought about offering an invitation back by chance?
I think they're giving them.
Personal issues would have to be discussed privately in executive session.
I've got another question. Um, getting back to the librarian, I got to speak with her. What impressed me is she's teaching the Spanish community, you know, she's helping them with English. I mean, that's better than Pratt, cause I don't even think Pratt does that.
I think Hutch does, but Hutch is a big library.
You know, and for a small community, that's amazing because unfortunately, we do have a lot of Spanish families here and small children.
Yeah.
So I just thought that was impressive.
We were, we were very happy with that as well.
Yeah.
See, we're noticing what you do.
She's hiding, baby.
She is hiding.
She's hiding.
Sorry.
I don't think she wanted to come, but she kind of got talked into it. Isn't that wrong?
Um, I, 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 I have comments. I would, um, if I may. I don't, I don't know how to do this from this side of the table. I'm sorry.
Well, there's a chair up there if you want.
And if there are comments that you want to make in private with us, we can call an executive session. Okay.
But you know, we've had, like I said, we've had other librarians who did the best they could do. But this librarian did the best she could do and believe me, we do appreciate it. She has been above what I thought any librarian would do.
And I'd like to, my neighbor, Ms. Patty Cooper, she's a, you were an elementary school teacher.
Oh, cool.
And this is the first time she probably stepped into this building other than pay a water bill.
Not yet.
Didn't we vote?
Yeah, we voted here one time, but I mean, you know, and now that she knows she's got a library, you better watch her.
Well, good.
She likes to read books and stuff.
I have a bunch of kids books and education books.
I can tell you, if we have a librarian, she would be most helpful. I, right now, she's not mad at, she's not, she's not mad at you. She's mad at us.
Well, I don't even look at my books. They're in a basement now and I've got a ton of them that I can donate.
I donated all my books when I left the classroom as well.
I did too.
I always tell children that books are fantasies.
Let's let Tanya speak. I think she's ready.
Okay, I'm, I'm shut up now.
Um.
Come on, Tanya, you can say it. Just say it.
Well, I have to hold, I can't stand and read.
Wait here. I'll stand there.
Kenny, Kenny, come and put it on the table so people can see you.
We're not gonna put handcuffs on. You know that he appears.
Here.
That's there.
There you go.
Thank you. The Turon Library Board has fought hard to keep this library alive. Sorry, guys, far harder than I have for far longer.
You're okay.
I know. They have.
Okay, are any clinics, anybody?
She went to get her.
She went to go get her. They have persisted through many different directors and many different struggles, including COVID, which nearly killed the library. We were on the brink of closure. Um, they have not only successfully resurrected it, but they grew it exponentially. Since January, and my numbers aren't precise because I didn't, I didn't have access to them, but approximately five thousand dollars worth of free money has been brought into this library by the Library Board. And it's been used to fund programs, purchase the new copiers slash scanners slash vats for the community. Um, we brought in over three hundred new to us books, some new. Um, and we've received about three thousand dollars worth of seeds through our seed library, free to anyone in this community. With some restrictions, we are a library. But the Library Board also put on the Easterhead hat where over a hundred and fifty residents and neighbors join together for some holiday fun in the park. Each month, we have on average fifty library visits and that's when we offer no programs. Um, months with programs, we see the numbers in the nineties to the three hundreds, depending on which program we offer. Oh, my computer died, sorry. So far this year, the library has provided conservatively, because again, I'm going from my memory, but eighteen book club meetings, twelve early literacy story times, eighteen art sessions, counting the art camp, a campfire storytelling night with local storytellers from Hutch, and the Kid Preneur Camp, which was helping kids start summer businesses. We were on par to provide, I believe, but don't quote me, about thirty-six individual summer reading programs in total to the community. And everything has been free of charge. We haven't charged a dime. Every patron has always been treated with the kindness, dignity, and respect the citizens of this community are worthy of and have a right to, not only as a library user, but as a human being. And we maintained and protected that ability or that to the best of our abilities, including your right to freely access information. And we are continually pursuing innovative and inexpensive ways to bring you more information. And trust me, these ladies, it's not, I didn't do it. They have been here far longer. They have fought for this library. They have said yes to me, but they have also said no to me. They are just as responsible for everything as I am. It is not me. They have fought for you. Our role in the community is to help meet the informational, educational, and recreational needs of its citizens. But libraries as institutions are centered for culture, for diversity, for art, and education and progress. And most fundamentally, libraries are safe for everyone, regardless of everything. Unless you are breaking the law or violating rules, libraries are safe. But we are no longer able to do that, I feel. We are no longer able to protect your rights nor can we guarantee your safety and this is why, which I don't even know if we're doing this, the rumor I've heard, um, is that we're shutting the library down. And.
I truly feel that is a rumor and I kind of like almost know where it got started.
Yeah, nobody ever.
Cause I, I don't know where it's gotten started and that's what bothers me.
I think it was the way it was forwarded.
The way it was forwarded where?
On Facebook by, I think it was, uh, so do you Turon Post?
That was, that was our wording that we had suspended until further notice?
I'm talking about the other one. The other one with the special meeting. I think that's where, we're in Turon. You hear more lies than true.
And that wording came from us as well.
Yeah, but I think that people misunderstood.
Yeah, we're not because.
Because the purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about the resignation. Because when you have a resignation, it either has to be approved or not approved, and we had to do that to be able to move on.
But do you understand, I think that people, when you start throwing fancy words, they misassume.
All we talked about was the resignation of the current librarian and the future administration.
Yeah, see, but they're, I think that kind of.
Which meant the future librarians that we are going to hire, just like we did when Sharon Bergsong resigned.
But I think people misunderstood that and that's probably where the rumors came from, to be honest.
There's been no decision to close the library?
No.
We won't let you. We'll, we'll chain the doors and knock you in there. We love our library.
Then you should come see.
Oh, you're gonna see me.
I'm coming and visiting.
Before you got here, we were telling them that we'd like to see the support before it gets to this point.
Exactly. I thought that as well.
But Heather did explain a lot of the things. I mean.
Right.
I haven't been in a library since I was probably sixteen or I'm sixty.
Right.
Shame on me.
Shame on you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You should be a good candidate to join one of our book clubs.
Oh, I'm gonna, we'll talk later about that.
We're having a book club tomorrow at two o'clock. Anybody want to go?
We're out here.
Right here at the library?
Right in the library, yeah.
What's the book about? Do you know?
Um, we're going to choose a new one. I think the newest one, God, it's Hank the, oh, the, Hank the Foreigner.
Last thing, no. The, the one that was the current one is.
Is that it?
The last one.
The next one we're gonna have?
Jan's trying to tell them.
Yeah. The book that has been read and will be discussed on tomorrow is the last thing each one. The one that we will distribute and we announce is sold on Monday. And then we'll talk about whether we're gonna do it.
I mean, I made straight A's in English because we get to that section where if you read books, you got credit. I mean, I could read ten books in a week. I mean, I just hammer back.
The, the.
These are really good books.
The book clubs open to everybody?
Yes.
It's a community program.
Uh, well, unless something comes up, you'll see me tomorrow.
Sure, talk.
Okay.
Flybar.
We'll be here.
Welcome all of you.
And are we still doing the book club tomorrow? I'm sorry, are you still doing the book club tomorrow?
She opened the door.
So unless something comes up, you'll see me.
Sorry, we side, side rode you.
Sorry, why are you going pretty timely, Tanya?
Um, I did not read the, I did not resign out of the desire to leave the library. My heart is in pieces scattered in those stacks and my soul is still sitting in the dust chair. I love this library and this community. It brought me great joy to serve you in the capacity of librarian and to do so to my best ability because this town deserves it, each and every one of them. But I deeply believe in the institution of the library and I believe in the principles they represent and the rights of every living, breathing human being libraries fight to protect. And I'm talking about the First Amendment rights to intellectual freedom, which is a part of free speech. And this means that you and anyone who comes to the library without an adult to decide for them has a right to access any information not restricted by federal law, one, without being questioned, and two, without being charged unreachable fees. Further, because we are a library, you possess a right to do that privately and confidentially. Every user, regardless of age, regardless of anything. The reason I resigned is because my values no longer allow me to keep the library position. My responsibility is to protect your intellectual freedom and the only way I can do that and safeguard my mental health was to step down. There have been five instances where I feel the mayor and city employees have not only violated intellectual freedom, but they have disrespected my authority in the library, interrupted my work for unnecessary and uncalled-for confrontation in front of patrons, including minor children, and intimidated children or orchestrated unpleasant experiences for them while they were at the library. I believe the library has been violated. I tried to stop her. The Library Board tried to stop her. The Library Board went to the city council who tried to stop this from happening. I was not at that council meeting. I have not watched the video of that council meeting. But because of the support the council has given the library in the past, I do believe they tried to put a stop to this behavior as well. Even still after that, the mayor came into the library, bypassed me to reprimand a child for leaving his bike on the sidewalk, which I will admit is a valid complaint. I believe the complaint, though, should have been addressed through me. Um, so I could handle it in a safe way with the child as the librarian. But when she walked in and addressed the child, she violated his intellectual freedom because he was on a computer and by addressing him, she was also viewing everything without his permission that he was accessing. She also then told the child that he had to park his bike in the bike rack. We don't have a bike rack. So yes, I got angry. I did.
This is just my neutral side. As you know, I take it every, every time. Um, what I saw from that was we're on city property and she saw a liability as if someone was to have tripped over that bicycle that was on the sidewalk.
Right.
Which if we knew it was happening, we should have been asking to at least park it on the grass or park it out of the walkway.
Again, I agree.
Um, I see that she was coming in to ask the kid to move the bike. She was unaware and I'm not defending her.
No, 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 no.
Do not, this is my, my opinion of the matter. Um, came in to ask the child to move his bike, um, did not know that there was not a bike rack. Um, I don't feel, and I was told that she didn't come into the library, that she did it from the doorway. Um, but if she did go over to the computer, I do not believe her sole purpose of going over there was to see what the kid was doing.
Oh, no, neither do I.
That was just an opinion.
I, I, I don't believe. I cannot speak for intent. I can only speak for action.
And, and again, I'm just, mine is an opinion of.
Right. I, I can't speak for action, but these actions, I feel, are violating. And I can no longer allow that under my charge, if that makes sense. And that's what the issue is. And yes, I acted impulsively. Yes, I took away something that the city needed and I do regret that and apologize for that. And I apologize to the Library Board as well for putting you in this situation. It was never the way I wanted to leave, what I wanted to do to the community, the way I wanted this to work out. Um, especially not through the library. Um, if there were a way to rectify it, I would be happy to. Um, but I, I don't, I have options. I don't know how to discuss it.
Um, but we can go into executive session if you need to.
Sure.
We're gonna have to for a vote anyway.
I, I will say that I did ask about the bike rack. Um, and knowing that obviously the mayor does not ride a bike up here. The city maintenance people moved that bike rack to the pool, but there was one there at one time. And so I think that that was a misunderstanding. That I think probably could have been discussed and rectified that way because I truly feel like that was a misunderstanding.
And I don't, she, she discussed it with us. I, I don't feel that she went in there with any ill intent at all. She was looking at the city property, a liability that could happen and was asking a child to move the bicycle and this is where we're at now.
And, and I guess my issue is how many times do you have to ask somebody to respect something and have them continually disrespect it before enough is enough? And how many times have we asked her to please respect the library, please respect my authority in the library, please respect people's individual right to intellectual freedom in the library? And even if you're not intending to violate it, we have repeatedly said, this is what you're doing. And the behavior continues. And that's the issue that I have. Even if your intention isn't there, oh, I didn't go in there to violate your intellectual freedom, but I'm doing it.
But I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding how that's violating intellectual freedom to ask him to move his bike. I understand that he's on a computer, but he's also on a public computer in a public library.
He's on a public computer in a public library. There is a reasonable expectation that he will not be bothered by anybody on that public computer, in that public library who does not have a reasonable, like who isn't the adult who brought him or who isn't me, the library director, somebody like that.
I understand that, but I also understand the position that the bike's on city property. If someone trips over it and gets hurt, the city's liable and she is the mayor of the city. So I mean, I guess I understand both sides of it.
So why can't the mayor call me and say, there's a bike on the sidewalk? And I say, okay, hey, can you move the bike off the sidewalk?
I'm not sure that she would have even thought of that as anything that she would have to do.
And herein lies the issue.
We've got some questions.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to stay.
The gentleman behind you has had his hand up.
I just, Ann Johnson. I just kind of feel from what I'm hearing that it was all just conducted poorly. I mean, uh, just kind of, how would you all feel if I came to you wherever you were at in a public place and just chewed all your asses for something? Probably wouldn't feel very good, would it?
I'm not sure that's what she's saying happened. I think what she's saying that's happened is that the mayor came in and said, hey, can you move your bikes off the sidewalk? Cause it's kind of in the way and if somebody trips over it, we're.
I think the problem is, is that the mayor should have realized that there was a librarian there and she should have.
I think that's what she is saying, but she's saying that the mayor came in and chewed her out in front of the kid. The mayor came in and asked the child to move the bike.
It should have been handled differently.
I have a question. Is there, my name's Teresa Chain.
Teresa what?
Chain.
Chain?
C H A I N.
Cool.
I like it. Um, I have a question.
You go ahead.
If I came down here to the library or to the city offices and I said, you know what, I need a copy of rules regarding tree trimming, or I need a copy of said rules regarding parking on, on the streets. I need a copy of this. Is there in fact a fee that we as residents have to pay in order to get that information?
That'd be a question of the city. That is a city council question.
Well, she asked about the library.
We don't, well.
Oh, you don't have.
And as, as a small town library too, I would even direct them to the city.
Right.
And that is, you go talk to the city about those rules and regulations. I even called around to some other small towns and it is free to look at the book, which is what they stated to us. But if you want copies made, then the copies have to be made and you have to pay the hourly rate for that clerk to make those copies. But again, this isn't a question that needs to be asked to the city clerk. Cause that, I mean, that, that's city issues.
That's out of. That's city issues that affect the library. Really, it's between citizens and the city. The library is not the middleman for that. I understand they're not the middleman, but I do understand that it highly affects the library. When you've got a citizen that goes to the library and says, I need a copy of such and such. That citizen comes back to the library and says, they want to charge me sixteen dollars and fifty cents an hour to the librarian, okay?
But that wouldn't be any different than a person coming in off and saying, my electricity has been shut off.
Right, who do I call?
Well, you might call the electric company. There are certain people that handle certain problems.
I understand that completely. However, it should not have any bearing on the library.
It doesn't.
This person, this librarian.
And she could have just recommended that people go ask the city, you know, hey, I don't know what the ordinances are.
Right.
Go talk to the city. Those are city ordinances.
Yes, and that makes perfect sense, makes perfect sense and I understand the difference completely. However, it came back directly to her to where she had to go hide. I don't understand. When she asked for those, she, being the librarian, asked for. When she asked for those, she, being the librarian, asked for those particular papers, was informed, you don't get special privileges just because you're the librarian.
Well, it is.
Is that a fact?
Yeah, well, that is a true statement.
That is a true statement. It's also true that I don't get special privileges because I'm a librarian.
But you should be able to access that particular information.
That is not something that a library has to be able to access. We've checked the laws on that.
Really?
Yes ma'am.
We should have a reference of it. I mean, a copy for reference, but we don't.
And it's not a law that we have to have that. That is something that we would send a person to the city for.
It's available in the city offices, which are open till two and a half.
Three thirty.
Three and a half.
Seven thirty.
You're welcome to go in and look at it as long as you want to. They, they're happy to help you. If you don't know where that ordinance would be, they will ruffle through and find out. I'd love to have it online. I'd like to be able to.
I would too.
And I brought that up.
You being Californian, you can look it up. How cool would that be?
But again, that's outside of our control. Um, the library does not have a legal right to have that information in the library because.
Can you check on that?
And so that is.
I'm not sure I understand that statement. I don't have a legal right to have it.
We don't have to have it.
I believe Tanja checked on that. There's no law that says we have to have it in the library.
Okay, there's a law that says that we have to, but there's no law that says we can't.
Right. We can, but they do not have to provide that to us either.
Well, I got it and I'm going to put it in the library.
Yeah. And that's.
About that, Cheryl, one minute. Okay, if I'm in the library on your computer and I have to go and I'm filling out paperwork at the SRS and say she would have came in and got behind me and I'm filling out that and say I left my bike on the sidewalk, I would be very upset if she was behind me. And that would be a lawsuit. I'm sorry, but it would be a lawsuit for you guys.
You just turn around and say, what are you looking at?
You know, she has no business looking, even though she's the mayor.
You know.
And there's some questions as to what happened that day, whether that was said from the door or closer. I don't know.
I agree, she should have went to her and had her go have the little boy go out and move his bicycle. And that should have been all that she would have been.
It's Tanya's, Tanya's territory. It's her territory.
Just like the mayor's office is hers.
Just like the city lady. If he would have been in the city office and his bicycle was out in the front, she would, should have been the city lady, go out and tell him to take that bicycle off the front.
We don't know the details.
I understand and I don't either because I wasn't here at the meeting or nothing.
And I've heard two different things on that.
So, but I agree that she should have that right.
But just like, you know, she's even admitted, you know, and mistakes happen.
Mistakes do happen, but not over and over.
We, we can't keep beating that dead horse. It happens.
But it needs to stop.
And we are also not here to trash the city or it's a blight or it's a thing. So, that's not even something that we're going to discuss.
And I'm not doing that, but I'm just saying, that's a thing that you guys need to look at.
We know these people. They know us. They're our friends, neighbors. So, you know, they're not our enemies.
I'm not putting anybody down.
You know, if we have a, a problem with them, we need to talk to them.
And just like I said in the meeting, my main goal is just for everyone to get along.
Yeah.
I think what Cheryl was trying to say though is whether, what happened, Linda, the librarian's like the mayor. She should have addressed her instead. And I, you know.
And there were reasons for that that were discussed.
Yeah, okay.
And that was, that was discussed privately.
Because just on the night at the meeting, I had told her to try to limit her interaction with the librarian and that's what she thought she was doing by bypassing the librarian and going straight to the kid and asking the kid to move. She was limiting her interaction with the librarian. So that's why she went to the kid. I kind of disagreed with that Heather. We asked if there was a problem that she bring it to the board, not to. But that's something that can't be, like if she called a board member, a board member is not up here to deal with it. And to, to get a bicycle moved, I mean, that's. But there are bicycles out there all freaking summer. I know, and I told her, if we knew that they were being parked on the sidewalk, we should have been having them moved.
We should have made another bike park. That's what I should have done.
Another bike rack?
We should have another bike rack?
Yeah, why not?
I think there's two at the pool guys.
Well, that's because the one from here was moved to the.
Well, okay, to kind of mutate the conversation a little bit.
That one is being part, something that has to be put in both there and at the front. And, you know, so that whoever wants a bicycle, which are adults as well, aren't leaving their bikes on the lawn, aren't leaving their bikes on the, on the sidewalk to be tripped on.
Well, James?
Trying to change subject a little bit.
Yes ma'am.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this as an example. She is the librarian, correct? That, that was her job.
I believe she was.
Therefore, if I was to send my kids to the library, I am leaving them in her care, in her custody, in her protection. So, I mean, I'm not trying to dog anybody, but Linda literally, to my understanding, bypassed her protection and went to a minor. It doesn't matter if it's a minor thing or a big thing. That is her job. I mean, just like the pool, if you have a problem at the pool, you go to the pool manager. If you have a problem at Walmart, you don't complain to an employee, you talk to a manager. That was her position, that was her job and that was her place.
We don't disagree with you on that.
Yeah, we agree.
I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting.
We don't disagree with you.
We're not in charge of Linda.
We understand that wholeheartedly.
Yeah.
We really do.
Because I'll tell you right now, if it was my kid, I'd be pissed. I mean, I'd be beyond pissed. I leave it in her custody, you know?
We didn't fire her, okay? We loved her. We wanted her back.
It was my kid.
If, if, if Tanya's right to, to quit when she wants to, this is the United States. She doesn't have to work for us, but what am I gonna do?
And I'm sorry, if they've got a problem with bikes being on the sidewalk, then they need to provide a bike rack. This is their building.
Let's do it.
I mean, I, I was just on my mother's phone looking at bike racks. I mean, I, if I could find them.
She was trying to minimize the amount of interaction she had with Tanya and that's not the place to do it.
No.
Chris patiently had his hand up.
Oh, totally on him.
Yeah, the law is with Tanya. And I come in to talk to some kid, I'm gonna ask her first.
Exactly.
And I'm part of the board. Go figure, it's not my kid.
It is.
She's in charge.
That's exactly what it is.
I say, can I talk to someone?
Again, the city is not under our.
No, I, I agree with what you guys, but that's, I mean.
Okay, Chris, it's your fault.
It has happened and we're here just to try to.
We're not letting it in here.
Yeah.
Right.
This, this is it. Listen, I thought that the council meeting that I had, I thought that Linda and Heather had come to an agreement on how they would handle things. I do think that there needs to be some control between the library and the city as far as the city maybe mistakenly, mistakenly doing some things that maybe they don't know they're doing at the library or vice versa. You know, the librarian going to the city. I think there needs to be a, a regulation set forth that everybody can agree on to get along with. As you just said Heather, we've all lived in this community for hunting years. We all know each other and we have to get along. Okay, it's that simple. It's that we do have to get along. Now, I think in people's haste, they make rational, irrational decisions, which sounds like it could have been this case here, but those decisions have been made. You can't go back and change those decisions. Doesn't matter if Linda was right or wrong, doesn't matter if Tanja was right or wrong. I think that those decisions are made and we should move forward with that. Now, as to the bike rack, I want to say, uh, my kids used this library when they were growing up. Heather Frank used to teach this kid sitting right here and she'd give him assignments and I didn't have a computer at home and my kids would come up here and do their stuff that they had to do on the computer. This library is, this library is very productive. Library to this community, it's a big staple to this community. I want to commend all of you for, as she had said earlier, working hard to keep it up for quality years, which you did. As to the bike rack, my kids have used that bike rack, there used to be one out there. I wondered what happened to it when it was gone, cause I noticed, noticed it's gone. And I'll be more than happy to buy and donate a bike rack and put it out there to the city library if that's what we need to make sure that, uh, the bikes stay off the sidewalk. Because that, if you're looking at it from that point of view, it can be.
And again, I do not think it was moved to not have one at the library. I think they saw the need at the, the swimming pool and.
Well.
And I don't know that, I mean, my understanding was that she didn't even know it'd been moved, that the maintenance people did it. And so, you know, it, misunderstandings happened and like you said, we need to move on and think about the future and not beat a dead horse. We're not talking about the past, we're talking about the future.
Because I mean, it's happened and we've got, we've just got to move on.
I will commend, I will commend this librarian because, um, in the time period that I have been here and she has been the librarian, I have seen more protection out of this library than any other time in the history.
Oh yeah, she's done a lot of programs, done grant money. She has written grants, she's done a lot of programming.
She travels.
She has gone to seminars and even went to Topeka for the presentation of some grant money that she applied for. So, she's done a lot. She's done a, she's done a lot from the library.
We need to get the, we need to get the Toron Community Library, um, in the ears and eyes of the people of this town because it needs more support than what we have.
We've been trying for years. And she has been, uh, working on having an online presence because we know that many people are online. She's been updating the, the Facebook page for the library and so we are working to make sure that that can still be done. Um, I was working today on how to catalog the books and get them in the online catalog so that we can scan the books to make checkout easier for people. Um, I know Heather has accessed the Facebook site to make sure that she can update it. So, we're working to make sure that that happens. Um, regardless of who the librarian is, we want to make sure that that person is reaching out to the community.
Cause it's my tent, it's, it's my tent, like said Tacoma grew up here and went to Fairfield and it's my tent, that library was important to him as a kid and I'm hoping that it's just as important to my library as it is.
Absolutely. We love that.
That would be great.
We want the community at the library. We want the community involved in the library, that's why we're here. That's the whole reason. We're all volunteers. That's the reason we do this, because we want that library to be.
We don't get paid.
We going into executive? I mean, we kind of got sidetracked.
We probably, do we need to go into executive session? Have we heard you for that?
Do you want to discuss with us in the executive before we vote?
I think we still got to hand out declarations. We'll pick two by five.
Hi, chairman of the Toron Library Committee, call executive session at seven forty-five to discuss issues with the librarian. Non-elected personnel. At this point, for ten minutes, may need to be extended.
That's fine.
You guys just stay put.
We're just gonna wander, we'll be back.
Some of us are just gonna step right out.
That would be fabulous, cause we could use one in front and one back there. I would be.
I would let, I'd ride my bike down.
Yeah.
Lisa, what's your name? My name is Anna.
Are we all going in there? Come on, Karen. Take your, your, uh, take your chair out there and have some.
It's a, it's a me, Teresa. Hi, I'm Sharon. One minute.
Oh yeah. And she should have been. And my brain, she should. And I'm telling you, she, she's the mayor, so how does she know that with all the authority that she has? Mayor, you know her like that? She and I, I give the.
Yeah, and I think, uh, it seems like we're already struggling to be like almost like refereeing, middle of the road and they're trying to see both sides of the story. One of the things that came to my mind as we're sitting talking about the mayor, I don't know if anyone knows the answer, how come the mayor disappeared at this rate?
The library.
Well.
She should be here.
She should be concerned enough to be here or maybe she feels some animosity or just wants to avoid, uh, being here and having to hear complaints. Uh, but that, that's part of a mayor's job. I mean, don't they spend half their day trying to solve problems and this is a really big problem. How long has she been mayor?
Eight years. Eight years? Too long.
Yeah, because obviously the people voted her in and if there's a big problem with their, and they said, I don't know, you know, it's not, it's not my thing because I don't live here, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a problem. It seems like it's a behavioral kind of issue. The librarian seems to be very professional, isn't it what your perception is? She's very discreet, well-trained and professional.
She's done a very good job.
It's like, how can you guys afford to lose her? I don't see how you really can, but if you have no choice, you have no choice, but it's like.
They can't afford to lose her. She's, she's.
But she said that when she resigned, she did so like impulsively because I, it's obviously she's emotionally traumatized by this whole thing.
Talk with identity to her.
Yeah. In other words, all of us have a limit. Whatever experience we go through, whether you want to talk about relationship, career, problems at work, everybody's got a limit. Once they reach that limit, they're done, you know? Unless somebody can like mediate and, and kind of come in between and, and try to work out a solution. But sometimes what happens is, and usually, you know, it's like one or two people in the mix are people that are not gonna change their behavior, they're just gonna do what they do. And you either tolerate it or you get the, ow, you know? So, I, I don't know. I, I'm hoping for the best to come with this. You know, when I read an article about this, I wanna be fair to everybody and, but it needs to come out so, because libraries have kind of been in the crosshairs lately. Look at Sterling, I don't know if you guys know what Sterling's going through and kind of a debacle over there, you know? And, and the mayor messed that up big time because he's, he, I, I heard him on a clip with Channel Twelve and he said, oh, the media, they're so inaccurate about this story, you know? And it's like, then the guy asked him and ordered, well, what, what inaccuracy are you talking about? He didn't know what to say. But, you know, for some reason he went into super protective mode. I'm the mayor and if I say the media's inaccurate, that's it, now get out of here. You know, mayors should not be that way. They should kind of like open up and, and tell their side of the story instead of, you know, like putting a lid on it and saying, okay, everybody leave, you know? So, but, you know, this is something that needs to come out because it's an emotional subject, but it's also like a very important subject to do with rights. Like she was talking about, freedom of speech.
It's like Heather Frank over there, the president of our library board was, um, a special ed teacher with my son, named Tacoma. It was an autistic and if it wasn't for Heather Frank being in the room, he probably would not have arrived.
And, you know, I like how, um, you know, she, she lauded the board, you know, and everything they did on behalf of, um, library. And then the criticism came, but I don't think the criticism was aimed at the board per se. I think she was basically saying she wasn't getting the help she needed with the interference that she was experiencing with certain people.
Right.
Um, and because of that, um, she just reached her limit, which we all do at certain points in our life. And sometimes though, there's hope for reconciliation, just like relationships.
Right.
Sometimes you think, I'm gonna divorce her because I am so dumb. But, you know, you, but you, you know, you gotta like take a step back because you realize, okay, how sad am I gonna be if I do that? Because I gotta, you know, there's more positive things about the person.
Right.
Than, than the negative. And stuff happens and people get hurt, I understand that. And it seems like she, she would want to come back, her body language says she wants to, but she's torn because I think she's afraid. because I think she's afraid...
But that's why I said there's gotta be some ground rules.
But see, by the mayor not being here to kind of like say, "Okay, maybe, you know, if she was..." I don't know. I've never talked to her, but if she came here and said, "Well, look, I'm sorry. Maybe I stepped out of line," or just make a half admission...
Let me help.
But instead, she's like holding it round, and she's, you know, like digging in her heels.
And that's what she does.
Yeah, and if she does that systematically, then what can the librarian do? I mean, she's basically on lockdown in a sense, you know? She's got the authority, but she can't exercise her proper authority with all that interference.
You're right.
So, yeah, it's, I wish there was a way for mediation when things like this happen.
I thought the mayor and the other one would be here. I was really shocked.
Yeah, for some reason, the mayor didn't want to come. Well, she missed her chance to speak here too. Because that's, she has a right to free speech as well as anyone else.
And see, she used to be on the library board.
Yeah.
Linda was on the library board for years until Heather Frank took over.
So, I don't, and I'm sure the mayor's done some good things for this city, but the thing is, when there's a crisis, you gotta handle it.
Yeah.
You gotta deal with it. You can't like just say, "Okay, I'm just gonna do what I do," and everybody can just like it or lump it, you know?
It's not that way.
It's hard. This is so hard. I mean, I had no idea. I knew you guys had problems over here because when I saw that post on Facebook I saw this afternoon, and I sent an email to David Green. I said, "I'm gonna go over and cover that story because there's some turmoil over there. What's going on?" You know, and so, yeah, and we're not. Yeah, so I write articles. I'm a freelance journalist, but I, you know, I just, I'm basically like a volunteer. No, I don't care anymore. I should though. But, yeah, well, do you look at the record or the Stafford area?
I get the one for here. I get it every month or every two weeks, however. I get the record.
So, yeah, yeah.
Are you doing okay, guys? I am so proud of you. I got you out of the house.
It's actually almost hotter than hair dryness outside.
Oh, that's okay. I wander around a little bit. Just go to school. Just go to school.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Well, that'd be good for you.
Johnson?
Jacob?
Twelve.
I went to pick up a flash for breakfast.
Beautiful oversized chair.
It's at my living room right now. I'm gonna take some, I'm only freaking for a while.
Uh, no, I got both sides of the story.
I just tend to let the light go on the side of the wall. But I do a careful reading. I do your job.
Yeah. And I've been... Yeah, I can see what the librarians is like. Anything that goes on here, I'll take care of it. Just don't borrow it from here and just give the city what they want. Because the mayor's personnel, you know, essentially kind of the personal personnel. But that's how it plays. If they've got the authority to be personal, then they have to do that. But if they don't have the authority, the only rest of the library, like I said, she has the authority. Vote your tribe or say, "Oh, some..."
Don't move your body.
Yeah, and then talk to the mayor and say, "We'll take care of that problem." Well, exactly, but, you know, the mayor just kind of, you know, uh, made a dangerous reaction. And then, part of the... And I guess that was the kid.
Yeah. That was the levy, I guess.
You could say the needle in the haystack.
Absolutely. Yeah, Jacob's my son.
So, he's, but that's a shame that someone took the bicycle rack away from this library.
Well, I was like, "Well, why did he put it in the bike? It's used." There's no bike ride by the door.
Well, it's a shame. It's like, well, then where are you supposed to put it?
Are you kidding me?
Have a designated spot. That absolutely is what it is in that designated spot.
Yeah. Oh, boy. I'm telling you.
Yeah, I agree.
But I'm glad you showed up because...
That's why I was just kind of caring.
Yeah, that's good, and I hope there's some resolution somehow.
I mean, he knows not to leave the door.
Right.
Somebody said, "Oh, you didn't like it."
But, you know, probably the librarian feels like, well, that's not one thing. It's another, though. The problem is, if you feel like there's no way out...
But she does a wonderful job.
Yeah, it's obvious. She's very intelligent and has the wherewithal to do.
Have you not seen her?
Yeah.
She's got glour.
Yeah, that's really, you know, that's kind of rare because most people kind of like are, you know, I hate to say it, they do a run-of-the-mill, pretty good job. Once in a while, you get someone that excels. That's the last person you want to lean.
That's why we're here to support her.
Especially for a small town like this, you know?
We're here to support her.
She has this idea that she's a wonderful woman. I told her, I said, "Sorry." I said, "Turn around and be back in the asshole."
Well, that's what it feels like.
Okay, guys. I noticed that we were past the ten minutes. You're fine. On advisement with Jan, we're going back in to ask for an extension on the executive session. And I'm going to call for a twenty-minute executive session at this time to go and continue our discussion. I should have asked for longer. It's the first one I've ever called, so...
I like how you kind of after meeting. We do appreciate it.
Okay.
You do not apologize to us when it's talking.
You know what, guys? Let's give these ladies a round of applause.
Oh, take what you have to.
Oh, I don't know if the restroom still works. Of course. The first door on that side.
Do they still work since?
Yeah, they do. Oh, yeah. Yeah, they do work.
No, actually, I...
You would want to know.
I did some for us the last week. I did, I did a quart of salsa.
If we keep the librarian, she also talked about maybe being able to rent that you can kitchen out and teaching people to can. Yeah, but can is really important. But prices going higher and higher, you know? Where was you? I can't pour quarts of potatoes today.
Yeah, she probably didn't like the dog. I ran out of jars.
Been a downer.
Ain't no sad. Jersey officials are coming. I'm gonna go to Chris's house. And Tacoma, although he's autistic, he can pack them as good as I can, if not better. I tell you. Yeah, but, you know, she, we talked about that. She said, "I'd love to teach people to can," because it's not hard. Yeah, it's not hard, and it's something, my son can can as good as I can. Unless he, unless he taught, he taught him, he'll see he can better.
I got any teachers issue.
No. But I think it's something that if you catch him, like Tacoma, he was probably eight years old. And I could walk over there and sit and I'll can, and sit back and let him do it. He can do it. It's something you don't forget. Right, his can. She's one ribbons.
I've known it since I was nine years old.
Yeah. And that's something else you'd like to try to get involved, you know, summer class, no matter what. Yeah.
Are they better for you both?
Until I get four jars, I won't be canning honey. I'm gonna make my sauce. I never knew when their meetings were. They're all set for a bid. That's the next one. They said on this paper. But there ain't a one, not one person that they hand them out to. They just set them there. Or people that say, they didn't say, "Here, here's our paper," or a roll call so they can see it. Yeah, I mean, people look, but they didn't know when the meetings were. I never, ever knew.
Maybe. It takes a little bit, but I could.
I don't know.
I don't either. I wonder, is it at seven, too? Would be at seven also?
Yeah, I think it starts at seven every time, yeah.
He loves the library. I can not land on that.
Well, I just don't remember. Yeah, Nick, when he was born, it's when you were concerned.
He helps me so much.
Um, he loves this jar.
That's what he told me. He says, "I got so many of them that I love them all." And he said, "You let go of one to do it for me." And I said, "No, I only know him yet. I've got his rays."
That's what he said.
We won't get it kindly out of his first chapter of the show.
Hey, which is, well, my youngest daughter said, "Would learn." Youngest boy, he doesn't know anything.
Yeah, he's actually, uh, um, yeah, he's a project to help me to... Well, he likes to try to give those, and as long as he's making enough... As long as he makes enough dairy artwork and that's all, right? And just hope this will help.
If you took the dryer outside, and there's nothing wrong with the dryer, but I love that it's safe.
Yeah.
Like that. And you were looking yesterday, you went to chocolate and that, where I made that, what's your garden? Well, I went home, we both said, "That's it." And they said, "Well, we can't get it cold, but that was..."
I'm not like that. I had an extra three thousand dollars. I could get new, like, two new ones, like, the dryer all in one.
Oh, yeah.
So, it washes and then it dries it.
So, I had, I said, "I'm going to make that new." And he said, "Well, the third and plump." I said, "Why?" He was looking at me. Third and plump, it's okay. I don't buy more. I said, "All the time." So, I went, "What are you telling me about?" Well, we can drive it there. And he told me, he said, "Why does, why does my friend, because I was happy, why does she get my gun in?" And he said, "You better listen to your friend because she knows till she walks."
Thank you. You're welcome. Had to work to get that one, that one.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Well, please tell her I said hello. And I said, "My mom, I mean, I don't have two years." Why, like, just two years old?
I go to my ma's house.
I said, "Oh, I don't know the joke." So, I don't want to make that. Cost me something.
My dryer is one of the brands I bought. It's one of the ten, so it's small.
Yeah.
Yeah. My washer, no, I have to leave it on close.
Oh, yeah. Well, mine was fitting, so I wanted to get the water out of it, I said.
Mine still's...
But nothing else in it, but I'm not gonna, I get the water out of it.
But now I get it, I have it, so...
Oh.
This is the usual, it's very good time to...
You have to tell me if it's a good way.
See, I don't have any good parts. I'm going Friday to see...
Your wife?
I'm going Friday to see Martha.
I saw your arm.
So, you had to come with the mayor, right?
My man? So, you're not in the company?
No, there's nothing wrong with it.
You got to be human, work that thing.
Oh, I know it.
You got to show the car to them. You're not holding on, you're hard to ignore.
I got on my hands.
Nick brings my hat. They can have this place. I thought they'd break this place all the time. There's spiders. I love my new shower.
AJ. On the boat.
Some of the kids, they'll answer by, oh, they shouldn't have bike back. I don't know.
Well, first of all, it's your dedication. Right.
Oh, I'm sure.
Right. Like I even asked him, I was like, "Well, did you put it in the bike rack?" He says, "Dad, there ain't no bike rack there." I said, "What do you mean there ain't no bike rack there? There will be." And I was like, "Well, you know, did you put it where it's supposed to go?" Other than that, fine. I think it's handled a little poorly. Absolutely. But still, don't put your shit in the way. Absolutely.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, I just, I know my kids here every day, and all day. Right. Right. He does all of that. So, what are they gonna do now?
Well, we need to give it to the community again. We need to have began their... Our call. We're worried about the use of it. Absolutely. There should be more people. I'm ready for maybe five or three.
Is this where they got the names for everybody?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Something, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. Right, the hat, yes. And watch it go. Right, exactly. That's... That's absolutely why I'm here. Like, my kid depends on this place. Absolutely. And that's not what, that's not what being involved is. And what I'm saying, what's on my... I've heard lots. Yeah. I hate that. Because I said, "My name is Watson."
That's not true, because I can't at all.
Yeah, you are getting it now. Because our kids, our kids are the future generations. Absolutely. Right. And what we instill into them too, is what to pour on us to be absolutely... I feel, I, I agree. In this library, what we instill in our kids, according to those values and success. Because library, that's what's there, is what makes them feel... Absolutely. Absolutely. I agree with it. So, well, I'm pretty sure they're... Uh-huh.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, they don't have it.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
I guess it is.
Absolutely. She's here, so I have to do that. Yes, yes. Thanks, dear. We absolutely, yes.
I'm not sure if you're...
What? Take her back?
Yes.
She left.
Huh?
She left. She got her, she got her left.
Yeah, yeah, she went home.
Yeah.
She just went.
I don't think so.
I don't know. Yeah, she's a little upset.
Yeah.
I'll find out later.
Looked on her face.
A little bit. She'll call my wife later.
She didn't say anything, but I've got...
She gets upset, so I'll find out.
Her body lingers. That's just the way I took it.
Yeah.
She didn't say anything, but I didn't really look.
Well, she's not agreeing.
Oh, boy.
Boy, you made a mistake of coming, didn't you?
Well, I didn't expect all this. I, I knew that there was some problem here, but then I didn't know it was, uh, this crazy that...
Yeah.
I mean...
It's sad. We can't lose our librarian.
Yeah.
And when she's talking about the kids, I'm ready to cry because you can feel the passion in her heart.
Yeah, because it seems like, uh, her heart kind of got ripped in two.
Yeah.
You know?
We all make bad decisions and...
Yeah, that's very rare that someone is that special.
I would like to see the library board offer her her position back and her take it. And I'd like to see the library perhaps get a camera in there with audio recording.
For her protection.
I can get one for like thirty, forty bucks on Amazon. I've got one at my house. I can watch it from my frickin' phone. I mean...
Yeah, there should be something.
Evidence. It's very hard to say, argue against video proof or video evidence.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I started recording all the council meetings.
Well, basically, they should at least have a camera for who comes in the building and who exits.
They do, but they shut it off.
Because, you know...
But then no, there's no...
And then, I guess one of the complaints Linda had was her vaping in front of the building. Okay, it's such a bad example for the kids, okay, but...
Like, everybody in this town doesn't smoke.
Yeah.
So what else is new, right?
Yeah.
But we have a council member that'll sit there and empty his water bottle and dip and spit in it. And that's gross.
And that's okay.
At the council meeting.
Down the west coast, so they start...
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
In my opinion, that's gross and sexy.
But what can you say? People do what they do.
I, I smoke, I'm not gonna...
Well, I got a brand new coat.
It's a hard habit to kick. I've tried seven times. I even took up vaping, but unfortunately, it started hurting my lungs, my...
Mm.
You know? If she's doing it not within ten foot of the door, like regulation, there's no... I'd rather kids see her smoking a vape than a frickin' cigarette.
Mm.
And the problem is, even, even if she goes out there, because we used to smoke out there, you have to crack, crack the door open a little bit. And then constantly complain, "Oh, we can smell your smoke." You heard that?
Either don't complain about it, as long as people follow the guidelines of staying within our ten foot away from the door. Make it a tobacco-free camp, uh, property, which would eliminate dipping, smoking, any sort. Or we can wing.
And a smoker pray for executive session so we can go up there and...
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to sacrifice and not smoke for however long it takes to do the meeting.
Yeah.
You know?
Boy, I'm sorry that it got this out of control.
And I think, I feel that the way they worded it, people misunderstood how they worded it.
Oh, I did.
And thought they're the host, the library.
I did it first.
Yeah, it does sound like, you know, like giving up. Kind of tone to it, I was looking at that.
But I wanna help this community, I wanna better this community, and that's why I'm...
Is it like, uh, when you run for city council, how many members are in?
Five.
So five, yeah. How many seats are up for reelection? All five?
Four. Five.
All five, yeah.
Yeah, November, September.
November, September, yeah. Have all the ones that are in there out and in there.
Yes.
So...
And it's just, nothing's gotten better.
Yeah, so it's the same old, same old.
The only one that's on the council that's...
The realness was mayor is new.
And she, in my opinion, I'm gonna vote for her if she wins.
She asks questions. The rest of them just sit there.
She asks questions, she questions things.
That's good.
Okay, they're back.
Tell us a good time when they're sitting.
They're being sustained.
That's my logic for the council.
I'm gonna move that we vote on whether or not we're going to accept the resignation of the library.
Library, I need a second.
That's okay. And this is just moving to vote on the resignation of the librarian. All in favor of accepting the resignation of librarian, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed of accepting the resignation of the librarian? Motion passed. Five. Resignation of the library is accepted. The librarian. Moving on to number two, hiring. We will need to, we like the pen passed and do a record ahead.
I think we need to, uh... Oh, I think we all need to decide what, uh, things we want to look at.
Okay. Do you think we need to have a separate special meeting? And update the...
Job description.
Job description and application?
Yes, I think that's...
Because the last application we had, we felt there were... Things we want changed then. So table, hiring. Another special meeting. To work on job description. And application. That all work?
Are we gonna have, try to be sorry something, but I, I mean...
And then we'll do online and we can... All right. I think this all needs to be done as soon as possible. We have to have forty-eight hour notice.
We could recess this meeting to another day. That way.
What was that, Jan?
Recession.
We could recess it to another day.
Or continue it.
Continue it to another day? And we wouldn't have to give notice again?
Yeah.
Okay. Um...
Neither.
What about Thursday?
I'm gonna get...
Ronan might be a little late, but we could start. Is everyone else all right with Thursday? Twenty-eighth, seven?
On Thursday, yes. Do you want to?
Yes.
And the purpose of that means we need to update the job description and implement an application and get all that done so that we can get an add out. Because we wanna get the library over that of this whole house.
And then we could work on talking about who wants to sit up here and try to get it back open, just to allow people to come in and analyze it and checking it out. I know I cannot. I am back to work full-time.
And I go back to work this week, so I can't.
Um, Mary, would you be willing?
I work seven to five, so I'm gonna have to five.
I didn't be here.
Kathy, would you be able to help Jan? And could we...
Does it have to be one of you guys to sit in?
Until we can get an application and get references checked.
Okay, because like my wife would volunteer to help out and get them to...
We can talk about it.
On those days?
I don't know, do you wanna talk about that on Thursday? If you're willing to put an application in the library, we would definitely...
My legs, my legs be in the park.
There's not a lot of standing.
And it is a part-time position. Um, it also, um, the hours, we can, we might be able to adjust hours if we need to, to, to help fit someone's... We're full of educators, we got two educators on the board.
And I babysit your babies.
Watch, watch for applications and I'd love to see, see one come in from you. And I'd like to have a good pool to choose from.
Basically, I'm, I'm, I'm like, oh, for like a thousand dollars a day.
Because, yes, we all agree, the library is essential to turn on. It is one of the last things that we have.
And it needs some...
And I do not know where the rumor started that we were looking to close it.
I already decided I wanted to re-continue that, so...
Good. Because, and you ought to check it, I'm sorry, I'm getting total off base. Check into Fairfield, they do what is called a senior falcon.
Yeah.
And I believe it's on Wednesdays. And seniors come in and they go to our kindergarten, our first grade. And they sit with the kids, they read stories with the kids. And the kids just absolutely love it. And then the senior falcons do too. And every year at the end of the school year, the senior falcons are recognized at their awards day. So you ought to look into that. I'm sorry, I'm getting total off base.
That's what I'm saying, sharing my experience.
So, um... But no, and I wanna see all of you start coming to the library and getting more of the kids to read. Because libraries are dying everywhere because everyone's reading on their books and their tablets. And they're not turning to the paper versions. And we can't let the last thing in this town shut down. So no, that was not any of ours thoughts ever, and I'm sorry that a rumor got started. Um, but please, if you're not sure, ask one of us instead of starting a rumor. Get clarification. Because from the wording, that was never our intent. Future administration meant we had a resignation submitted, how, why are we gonna go forward with administering this library? Shutting it was never an option for us.
Well, quit using fancy words.
I've been on this board for four years. And this is my third librarian already.
Yeah.
So I, we've been through the hiring process. We were not ever looking to shut our library.
And we wouldn't need the future administration of the library who've been closing down. We wouldn't have to administer it. So, so that's why it was worded that way, future administration, because there is a future of the library.
Yeah.
We are future administration, who is gonna be our future library. We also are gonna need a librarian that's gonna come in here and give programs with the kids and, and do story times with the kids and do a summer reading program. I mean, this killed our summer reading programs in the year.
Yeah.
It was supposed to start. It was supposed to start this Sunday week. And we, we don't have a summer reading program now.
Okay, I have a question. When you guys get a librarian, do you accept volunteers? I, I don't mind coming...
We have not had volunteers before, so we haven't had that issue to discuss before.
Well, could you put it on the, the continuance of the meeting, please? Because, I mean, I'm disabled, I do freelance work, uh, but I have a lot of spare time and I love kids.
Most of our volunteers are spouses.
I thought you said they're volunteers.
They're all gold. Typically, a volunteer would need to be up here with a library employer or working for them.
Well, yeah.
And that's just, that's for legal purposes because we...
Oh, yeah.
We need, you know, somebody up here who's...
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I'm an IT tech, I maybe can help the kids on the computers, you know, help them find books, maybe even help you guys with the online catalog thing.
You may be volunteer for reading. I have, uh...
Uh, don't read out loud very well, unfortunately.
Do you guys have any other comments? Thank you for your support. But please know, closing the library was never, never even a thought of ours.
This is your library.
And at that point, Jan, do I just, like a motion?
Well, yeah, I do move that we recess this meeting to Thursday, uh, July twentieth, at seven o'clock.
Oh, can I just, I'll send it? I'll let you have it. If you, if you're serious about wanting to donate a bike rack, please talk to the city office because it is city property. So they're the ones you're gonna have to talk to. But, um, we would certainly appreciate that if you would talk to the city and see if you can arrange that. That would be great. It would be helpful. Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passed, five. We will recess this meeting till Thursday, July twentieth at seven o'clock to discuss the hiring.
James, will you help put the chairs up?
I bet the chair...
Along with the thing, the job is...
All right, if anybody's curious, I will post this video on YouTube here. It'll probably be up in about four hours. And it'll say Tehran, uh, library, special meeting, and then the date.